For the city council meeting of the city of Folsom for June 8th, 2021, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rodriguez. Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalim Chirla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Howell is absent.
Okay, great. If everybody could please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any agenda updates?
You have two agenda updates this evening. Item 13 on the consent calendar has amended to the resolution. The amendment has been provided to the city council and copies are available to the public at the back table. And item 17 is going to be moved up on the agenda and taken as the first item of business.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, we'll do scheduled presentations on the consent calendar after this. Okay, so please call the first item then, number 17.
So your first item, number 17, is resolution number 10646, a resolution approving changes to transit services and vehicle branding for transit services provided by Sacramento Regional Transit under the 2019 annexation agreement with the Sacramento Regional Transit District. And I understand presenting tonight will be Brent Furniger from RT.
Fantastic, welcome. And just as a note for the audience, we wanted to take this item first on the off-chance that you had come here on public transit, which closes down early this evening.
All right, okay. That's it. Should I wear a mask while I'm talking? Okay, great. All right, good evening, city council members, staff and public. Is that, all right, there we go. So, back in April, SacRT, the SacRT came to the city of Folsom to provide you with an update on what we're doing in the city of Folsom, as well as talk about some services that we'd like to offer. After that update, we provided a proposal to transition the existing Dial-A-Ride bus service, which requires someone to book a trip in advance, and we wanted to move towards a simpler approach, which is the Smart Ride approach, which is the same day on-demand service, and we refer to that as a Smart Ride. At the same meeting, we also brought forward a request to update the city of Folsom's bus branding and make it more standardized with SacRT's branding. That will help us from an efficiency standpoint, it'll help us from a regional feel, so when you get on the system, whether it's light rail or bus, you'll have that feel, it's all one system. So today, I'm going to give you a recap of this information, give you some new information, and talk about a proposed transition that could work. So, just to give you a little history to start out, back in 2019, January 1st, 2019, we got into an annexation agreement with the city of Folsom. In that agreement, we agreed to no major service changes for that first year. We also agreed to make no changes to the fares in that first year. We've completed that task. I think the annexation was a huge success, we're very proud of it, and we hope the city residents are as well. Soon after the annexation, we brought in Smart Ride, I keep hitting this, apologize, and we also expanded into the Folsom Ranch area as well. Now SacRT is looking for new ways to improve our service, and that would be done by increasing the Smart Ride and moving away from the Dial-A-Ride program. So, the next three slides are some slides that James Boyle presented at the last meeting, so I'm going to go through them really quickly, but basically, on the bottom of the slides, it's just a timeline of events, on when these events took place and what we actually provided. This is, the next slide is the service area that he covered, and it just shows you the expansive area that we're covering. We recently, I think we mentioned at that last meeting, we recently annexed the city of Elk Grove effective July 1st, so that area is even going to come bigger and bigger, and we're really proud of that as well. And this next slide is just an example of the, we've expanded out to the Folsom Ranch area, and we're really happy with that as well. So, for this next slide, what I want to do is bring something back to you from that last discussion about ridership. Ridership is one of the tools that we look at daily, weekly, and quarterly to determine ridership patterns, determine what people are doing and how they're riding. So the graphs here that you have, there's two graphs here. One is a percentage of trips by mode, and the other one is an average daily ridership chart. And the percentage of modes trips is important to us because back in January of 2020, we launched Smart Ride. So what we did is we started tracking from that point and comparing the Smart Ride, which is the orange graph line, and you can see the blue line is the Folsom Dial-A-Ride. So when it started, there was a 70/30 split, obviously more people were using Dial-A-Ride at that point in time, but once you started going into those first three months, you actually saw it go from a 70/30 split to a 50/50 split, and then soon after that, it's just taken off, and Smart Ride has actually become more popular than Dial-A-Ride. So now, if you kind of move over to May of 2021, you'll see Smart Ride is making up over 70% of the trips in the Folsom area. The next graph right here is what we're showing is actually number of, average number of trips taken. So if you figure that most people take two trips per day on a vehicle, you're looking at this and you're saying, well, if someone was taking on average on the Folsom Dial-A-Ride about 42 trips, now you're seeing they're only taking about 10 trips in May of 2021, where Smart Ride has actually increased. And if you equate that to a number of people, that's probably anywhere from five to eight people that are taking Dial-A-Ride trips, where you're getting a lot more coverage with Smart Ride, and it's a more convenient option from that standpoint. So, you know, one thing we want to talk about is if, if the city council's direction is to move in this direction, which is to move away from the Dial-A-Ride and go into the Smart Ride option, we talked about, how would we do this to make it a smooth transaction? We've kind of listed out some options. One thing what we'd like to do is reach out to all those Dial-A-Ride customers and kind of inform them of what's, what this transition is. We've done a little bit of outreach, and the next slide I'll kind of go through a timeline of events showing that. But we're also going to provide them the SACRT Go services, and this is the traditional paratransit services. So those people that like to call in advance and schedule their rides in advance, they can still do that. But for those people that want the, the ability to be more on the fly and be able to schedule their ride as you go, which is what we're seeing, they'll have that option as well. I think actually, one point I'd like to point out in this last slide, one of the reasons we also saw that the ridership changed too is that the cost per trip was actually a lot cheaper on a Smart Ride option. It's $2.50 a ride versus the Dial-A-Ride's $4 a ride. So I remembered that thought, and it just kind of came to me on the next slide, apologize for that, but that's kind of a big, important factor. The next thing I wanted to talk about was, if we went with this kind of a transition, August 27th, 2021 would be the last day for the Dial-A-Ride services, so we'd make sure we reached out to everyone. And under the SACRT Go, they would have to book two days in advance. That's another piece of information that's important. And again, Smart Ride, you're able to book via phone or app. So here's some outreach things that we've done. We've obviously met with the Folsom city staff, and back in March, we kind of pitched the idea, we started meeting with some of the task, city task force members back in April. We came and met with you as board members and discussed the items. We've met with some concerned citizens on April 27th, and now we're kind of at the June 8th timeframe where we're looking to look for a transition and a branding proposal update. This next slide I'd like to show is, we recently did a survey of how we performed from a SACRT Go standpoint, and I remember when we went through this transition, some of the members of the city of Folsom were concerned about, what is the paratransit service like? That was a big discussion. I remember being here and, and hearing a lot of the complaints. Well, SacRT has brought that service in-house, and we're doing it now. We feel very proud of what we're doing, and we've, we've actually spent a lot of time, Carmen, her team, has done an excellent job in providing good services, and as a result, you can see that the performance measures really show that to be the case. Looking at the best score, we've got a 98.9% score, and looking at the lowest, it went all the way down to 85.4%. But again, I think these are excellent scores, we're really proud of them, and I wanted to make sure you guys got that information. The next thing we're going to do is, in these next few, three slides, we're going to show you some branding concepts, and, you know, obviously, this is the left side of the vehicle, the right side of the vehicle, and the front to back. So, I don't know if I want to, do you guys want to look at this a little bit further? Is it okay to keep going? I don't know how much interest is in it.
Looks like a bus.
Okay, yeah, exactly. Beautiful buses. Some other things that, actually Carmen and I were just discussing a little earlier today is, we're also, we're always looking for innovative ideas. You know, we're, we're looking at, you know, how is electricity, how can we get electrified buses, how can we look at smaller, more van-like buses? So I think that's something that we're really looking forward to, is finding ways to provide transit at a cheaper basis so that the customer doesn't have to pay more and we can provide more service. So, just, I'd like to start with some, or end this with some highlights, some positive things that we've seen is the Smart Ride, the SACRT Go expansion, we've given more access to the Sacramento region for the city of Folsom residents, there's a longer span of service, we've increased the hours, we're looking to do some cohesive branding, and that's going to help us again with fleets and so forth. And then the next steps, we're going to continue to do the Dial-A-Ride outreach, we're also going to meet with the Folsom Riders Task Force still, and again, the last day is scheduled for Dial-A-Ride is August 27th, and, and that's it. And I'd like to now just kind of open it up and be available for any questions.
I have a question. How many customers will be impacted with the Dial-A-Ride going away?
So our database shows there's about 181 people that are in the database, it doesn't mean they're all using it anymore, because a lot of those riders, as we saw, you know, three out of four riders are transitioning over.
Transition.
But I'd like to, Carmen, if you could, yeah.
Just nodding in agreement.
We talked about this in advance, that one I, I got lucky on that question.
YK, any questions?
No, it's more comments. Thank you for coming again and, you know, giving all the details. I know, in Folsom hearts, we love to see the big Folsom signs on our buses, right? I do see some small signs, that's okay, but the good part is the service you guys are providing is extraordinary. Even I personally have seen that, even a couple of friends wants to visit me, they said, no, I'll take the Smart RT, it's only $2.50, rather than you come out from the house and drive all the way, and all those, thank you. I think, I'm all positive comments.
Great. Rosario, any other questions? Okay. Carrie, anything you'd like to ask about?
I think I know everything I need to know about this.
Madam Vice Mayor, anything?
So I just want to make sure I have this straight in my head again. The Smart Ride is what you call corner to corner, right?
Correct.
Okay, and the SACRT Go, is that door-to-door?
That, that's your paratransit where you book two days in advance.
But it comes to your door and it takes you back to your door.
Yeah, and I'm going to ask Carmen, our VP of Bus Operations, to give you just a little bit of update on that, just so.
Great.
Yes, good afternoon, I'd like to supplement that. It is corner to corner, however, we can add a corner anywhere in the zone, and also, a rider can change their profile to make it a door-to-door, so if they need, if they have a mobility aid, if they use a mobility aid, we can accommodate them.
Okay.
So it's corner to door, but they can come to your door.
Okay, and then the SACRT Go is generally door-to-door?
Yes.
Okay. And when you presented at the last meeting, there was concern from a Folsom resident who is very active with this Dial-A-Ride service, that there was going to be a greater waiting time, like if she was going to go to a doctor's appointment, that was only going to take 30 minutes, she was under the impression that she wouldn't be able to schedule a return trip for 90 minutes, is that accurate, or did that get worked out?
There was some accuracy to that, we did have a follow-up discussion, that's been resolved.
Okay.
I think two days after this meeting, we changed our internal procedure with our reservationist, and now that's handled on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Outstanding, thank you. Okay, I don't have any other questions, we're going to take some public comment now.
Sure.
All right.
You have two requests to speak this evening. The first is from Chuck Zurich, and the second is from Partha Mohapatra.
Okay. Mr. Zurich, come on down. We have a number of items on the agenda tonight that people want to, want to comment on, and just as a reminder to everybody, normally what we do is start a clock where you have about three minutes to comment on whatever item you're interested in talking about. We'll give a little leeway if you're trying to make a point at the end of that time, but try and keep your comments to three minutes where possible. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Zurich, I live on Bramble Lane here in Folsom, and I use the SACRT Go and the Folsom services. First of all, I'd like to compliment three people on the Folsom services that do an outstanding job. There's Ogmead and Jennifer who are drivers, and Ron who's a dispatcher.
I'm going to double check, we're going to double check that mic, sir, I'm not sure it's turned on.
There we go.
Lot better?
Yeah, thank you.
From my background, I've been in transportation for 16 years. I started out with an executive car service, that switched over, and I handle the 10 western states for ground transportation for the transplant teams, organ transplant teams. At times, we have like 90 different vehicles involved at one time, and so, it's a constant thing, it's 24 hours, and it's always dispatching and getting things done. I think in SACRT Go, there's a lot of positives, the drivers are all positive, the receptionists are all positive, the one big negative I see is their dispatching system, because they lock you into boxes, and if something happens to you and you go to your doctor's office and he's not going to do the test he told you he's going to do, you're two hours early for pickup, and they can't change that. Call them, is there any way I can get an earlier ride? Nope, doesn't happen, so you're sitting there. I've had some instances myself personally, give you the last one, I just had a couple weeks ago, you're supposed to pick me up at 4:00 at the dentist's office, they sent me a text saying it's going to be 4:09, no problem. At 4:20, I called him, and they said he was seven minutes out, and he got there at 4:40, 20 minutes instead of seven. I was talking to him, he's a nice guy, all that, he said, oh, I was seven minutes, I was down at Safeway on my break, I couldn't leave. The dispatcher must not have known that, something had to go wrong there, because why are they telling me seven minutes? I think there's a real problem there, and the only thing you need to do really is to satisfy that, to talk with them, get something going on their dispatch system, because there's no flexibility in it whatsoever, it creates a problem. Other times, I've been picked up, corner sunrise in Zinbandel roughly, they drive all the way up, pass Highway 50, over to White Rock, pick up someone at the dialysis clinic, come back over 50, back past Zinbandel, over to Columbia down, and I'm still riding. Takes me an hour and a half to get home for a 20-minute drive. So, that's where I see a real problem with SACRT Go. I've already outlined some positives for you, but I think moving it, without everything being addressed, would be a mistake, because you're just going to get complaints, you know, for, for doing the difference. That's just my opinion. I appreciate your time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve, I think, probably going to need that one more time.
Okay, your next speaker is Partha Mohapatra.
Yeah, of course. Good evening. Yeah, I'm Partha Mohapatra, professor at Sac State University. I've been a resident for, in Folsom for the last four years, and I've been amazed with the public transport over here. So I was looking at the graphs, and I think that the, being a data analytics person, you know, the graphs is a little misnomer because it is during the pandemic time, right? So, like the ridership, personally, I didn't feel comfortable using public transport during the last, more than one year, so that is one thing. And second thing, so maybe what I was suggesting is that, maybe during the non-pandemic time, we should see the, run a little more and look at how things are working, because personally, I really loved the Folsom, the Folsom paratransit, and so, that is something that you may want to think about, whether we will immediately jump on it in August, or maybe look at it a little later. That is something which I want to suggest, and the other thing that I wanted to look at is that you are looking at all the statistics. One of the things that I have been consistently suggesting is the waiting time for the passengers, and that is pretty easy to find out, given the technology that we have now. So, what is the average waiting time for Folsom paratransit versus the average waiting time for SACRT? So these are the two suggestions I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other requests to speak?
You have no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? All right, great. Maybe I could ask Carmen to come on back up, and maybe if you could help address Mr. Zurich's concern about, you know, miscommunication on pickup times and things like that, and, and how the case-by-case basis would, would adapt that, or maybe possibly fix the problem he was describing.
So the case-by-case, case basis that we talked about last week was a reservation, allowing to be, a reservation to be made at a certain time.
Okay, gotcha.
What I heard was the on-time performance measure, which from the third party that conducted the survey, did say that there was an 86%, I believe, which was our lowest score.
Okay.
It was still 86, but it was our lowest score, so there's a lot of opportunity there to address and correct that. We acknowledge that, we do have the tools to measure that. Right now, we have 1:30, I think I talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, we have, if you have an 8 o'clock appointment, we can get there at 8:00 to 8:30. We're looking to change that, at, here at Dial-A-Ride, we have 15 before and 15 after, so that's a little bit different, how that window is. That window's also like that at Elk Grove, we believe that that would improve our on-time performance, so we're looking at updating that. We do have a open house, an open house for both SACRT Go and SACRT E-Van, and of course, Folsom's welcome because of SACRT Go, to go to these open houses tomorrow, we're going to discuss some of that and take some of that feedback. We do have a new technology, it's EcoLane, that technology allows us to be more efficient. This is our first year, we're almost at a year of operating. Again, I acknowledge that there is some room for improving there, and that's our, that's our goal, our GM has directed us to address those issues. This survey's very new, I think we got it two weeks ago, so we're looking, those, we have made that a priority, and we're looking to improve that.
Fantastic, okay. Brent?
Yeah, and I think we always appreciate comments from the, the public, because it makes us, you know, look at our service and try to improve, right? And I think both, both speakers had some really good points, you know, as far as, maybe with the first speaker, if, if there is an opportunity where there is an issue with the paratransit ride, the Smart Ride is always available. That's kind of one of those backup recovery kind of situations, that, that maybe that'd be something he'd be willing to try. When it looks, when you look at the, the data that we showed, there is, there is obviously an issue with the pandemic and so forth, but if you look at it, I think most of the issues that we started hearing about with COVID came around the March-April timeframe, and we launched in January, so we had about three months of data, which is actually where we went from the 70/30 split to the 50/50. So we have a little bit of data, but, you know, obviously, the data is what it is, we can't.
There's no reason why you would stop doing that analysis, though, right?
Right.
It's going to be ongoing.
We have automatic passenger counts on all our buses and on our trains, so we're constantly in, you know, meetings on ridership and looking at ways to improve it. Yeah, and then the last point I think was really important is, you know, what can we do to improve time, wait times? And by doing this transition, we'd actually be adding at least one more vehicle to help with wait times, so that's something I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, very good.
Because we have two right now, this would make it a third, and then potentially, if we needed a fourth, we'd, we'd evaluate that.
Excellent, okay, very good.
Can I ask one final question?
Yeah.
I think it was on the slide before this, it talked about how you were going to continue to meet with a task force or something, yeah?
Yes.
Is that rider, Folsom Riders Task Force, is that open to any resident who uses this? Okay, and so if somebody wasn't participating in that right now, but they wanted to, how do they get informed about that?
We, go ahead.
So we actually had a good discussion about that, that we received some feedback that some citizens did not know, so we only have 181, and I say only because it's so easy to call them all. So we're going to launch a campaign after this, whatever action takes place, to contact every single one of the 181 residents. It's easy to do.
That's the residents that are signed up for Dial-A-Ride?
Yes.
But it could be any resident.
And invite them to participate on the task force?
Yeah.
That's great, thank you.
And I, and I have one more question, too.
Certainly.
With regard to the breaks, something doesn't seem right to me that we have a driver that's sitting at Safeway on his break.
Yeah.
When there's somebody waiting for a ride. I mean, are we that tied in with the union contracts that they have to take breaks at an exact certain time? Why is that not flexible? And, and I've seen evidence of that myself.
Okay.
With vehicles that are sitting in the, in the Walmart parking lot.
And one thing I'd want to do is, I'd probably want to get the specific case information on that, but I, I think, do you have a general answer for that?
So yes, yes, they do, they are entitled to certain breaks, a lot of the time.
I know they're entitled to certain breaks, but do they have to be at a very specific time?
Yes, they have to be at a certain time, according to our collective bargaining agreement. What I do want to add is sometimes they're not on break, people assume they're on break because they're waiting for their next ride to be dispatched to their laptop. So we would, I would appreciate specifics, and we can research that.
Okay.
We are adding an additional trip to cover for those breaks in the middle of the day. Post-pandemic, our peak times were AM and PM, now during the pandemic, our peak time, people are choosing to ride at a different time, it's right in the middle where breaks are scheduled, so we're adding additional resources to address that.
But I, I would also suggest that if there's a way to get the union to agree for that, you know, I don't know how long these breaks are, if it's 20 minutes, a half an hour, whatever it is, but if they could pick a window where those have to happen, and then just pay a little bit more attention to what rides are coming up. Okay, so, I know I have a ride in 20 minutes, so maybe I'm taking my break a little bit earlier than I wanted to, but why not take it now?
Okay, I better understand your, what you're asking, there is a window. I think what we do then is work with our scheduling department to make sure that we float that break in the appropriate time.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
I understand what you're saying, yes.
The break be floated, so we don't have people that are just sitting there, waiting that could otherwise have been picked up, because, no, there's, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
I do, I understand, and that's, that's an opportunity we can address.
Okay, any final questions from you, YK?
It's more of a comment again this time. I want to thank, you know, both the speakers who came here and providing their views, it's important, and I want to thank both of you, being so open-minded, if you know the problem, if you know the challenges, you are moving forward to address them one way or another. I did see your email, also very elaborated email about the last speaker who came to the city council and how you addressed. So, I, I want to, once again, Professor, thank you so much for coming, and yes, you have a point, that the pandemic has some numbers, but the, the organization is more looking forward to address them and move forward, and thank you, sir, for coming, once again.
Rosario, any final thoughts? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, if anybody would like to make one.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalim Chirla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, business from the floor.
Your next item is business from the floor.
All right, once, once again, business from the floor is the opportunity to speak on items that are not on the agenda, and we have some blue comment cards, if anybody else has an item that we're not going to talk about otherwise that they'd like to address, fill one of those out and send it up here, please call the first speaker.
Okay, your first speaker this evening will be Michael Harris, and Michael will be followed by Mariel Crankson.
Welcome, Mr. Harris.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council.
Nice to see you.
City managers, it's always a blessing to be here, it's, woo, lot of years, so this year, 20th anniversary of Juneteenth, and Juneteenth is a celebration of freedom for all Americans, and we've been, working diligently to, we're pretty close, we're one vote shy at the US Senate for, you know, how y'all do consent calendars, they do it there, too, and, we're working on Ron Johnson in Wisconsin. But all across the nation, Juneteenth's a paid holiday for employees from sea to shining sea, Oregon, Washington, we're working on Hawaii, here in California, even though there's a ton of money there, you know, they got the doors locked, so we can't do effective education and advocacy, because they, they don't seem to think it's a priority in the state of California. While we have a racism as a public health crisis here in this county, according to the county board supervisor. So some of the things that are happening right now in our community along America River Parkway is fires. In my personal opinion, they are being intentionally set and probably hate crimes against humanity. And why would I say that? Well, two thousand and five, actually, two thousand, we started this conversation with Vice Mayor Aquino's father. And we were able to get legislation through and actually fund highway signs. And just, let's just say ninety days ago, the highway sign on the highway, William Alexander Leiterstorf Jr., Memorial Highway, who owned the land we're standing on right now, burned to the ground. And last week, Negro Bar signed, a structure burned down to the ground. And, you know, fire over at Cliff House and fires all up and down the parkway. And probably going to need some, a big fire like the Paradise Fire before people get serious. And thankfully, I hear my mom, last year, June, Vice Mayor met my mom. So she's saying, calm down, boy, calm down. And I think that I have her still with me. And I'm trying, I'm trying. The, I talked to the police chief earlier, and the police chief for the state is investigating. And some folks that are at the US Justice Department are interested because this is an ongoing challenge. And so back in eighteen forty-nine, when the city here was Negro Bar, and the only person, I mean, only white males could be citizens at the time in eighteen forty-nine. So the idea that we're going to have a celebration, and then after the celebration, we're going to dig deep and find out if we could come to some, you know, clear understanding of what the structural problems that are, you know, feeding systemic institutional racism. And in my hometown, where I was born, and this entire region festering. It doesn't make sense. In 2021, we still have these problems. But we do, we have to face them head on. So I thank you for your time. I hope some of you will come out Saturday.
Yes, Michael, can you give us the details of the celebration?
Folsom Historic Block Amphitheater, noon on the big main stage. And hopefully, the shade structure, hopefully...
Is that actually June twelfth?
June twelfth, Saturday at noon. The shade structure, it's not going to be hot according to the weather reports. So we're not going to be mad if the shade structure's not there. Activities all day, starting at high noon. We're going to have official program, and we're going to go to four-thirty entertainment. What's really exciting is about two years ago, the president of Ghana was here. And the Gold Coast of West Africa, they're celebrating. And we're tying the Gold Coast of West Africa to the Gold Coast of the California Gold Rush. And it's exciting. So we're going to explore possibly having a sister city. The map behind, and spooks, small spooks, snooks, is Ghana. And so there's opportunity there. A lot of money there.
Marvelous.
We have some children. That's my time, but y'all come on up.
All right.
Come on up, because they're speaking next. And as Denzel comes, are you coming, Denzel? So this young man was, I got really intrigued with this young man because he plays like nine instruments, and he wants to go to West Point and like go back home and do some amazing things. So that's my time. Y'all, do your thing.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Yes, so my name is Denzel. I'm here with my cousin.
Yes, I'm Mariel Crankson.
Yes, so we would like to start off talking about the program that we're a part of. And the name of it is I Benefits Incorporated. I Benefits Incorporated is invested in seeing the benefits of teenagers. Teenagers being successful, teenagers just having the opportunity to be well. And so we have various ways and means of doing that. One of those things are a talk show. It's called the Teen Talk Show. And in the talk show, teens are just educated about various different things, like sex education, drug abuse. There are just a lot of various topics that we go over. Things that teens aren't usually comfortable talking about. Those are some of those things that they have to know in order to be successful. So we go over those things. Do you have any comments about the Teen Talk Show?
Uh, yes. Not only do we go over things that teens really need to understand, we also go over, like, we will take the talk show and we'll take it out to the streets so that maybe teens who can't watch the show or aren't watching the show can also get that same kind of information. We also hold meetings where we talk about real-world events. So it's not just teens learning about, you know, uncomfortable stuff or like their own lives. It's also what's going on in the real world and how they can help.
Yeah, and on top of that, sure, it's good to get knowledge. But there are also teens who happen to be living in unfortunate situations. I'm from Ghana. My mom is also from Ghana. We know what it's like to be in pervertious situations. So what we also do is we provide things like water, clothing, shelter to teens, even here internationally. And in the, in the, in the talk show, you know, we also give those teens who have been helped their opportunity to speak as well. So we definitely, we're always looking for the benefits of our teens, no matter what. However, though, in doing that with helping teens and everything, sometimes we personally, as the organization, need help. So we're looking for a sponsorship or partnership to help with our resources, things that we need to promote the talk show and I Benefits Inc. as an organization. We really want to help teens.
Fantastic. Denzel, maybe before you leave today, maybe you can leave some contact information with our city manager, and we can have a more extended conversation about this.
That sounds good.
Yeah, appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Thank you both. All right. Do we have other requests to speak?
You have no additional request to speak under Business from the Floor.
All right, fantastic. We're going to move on to our next item.
Okay, your next item is Scheduled Presentation, item number one. This is a proclamation of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Folsom.
Okay, and it is my great honor to read this one. We don't have anybody specifically to give it to, but it's a worthwhile endeavor. So this is a proclamation of the mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Folsom. On June first of two thousand and nine, President Obama issued Proclamation Number eight-three-eight-seven for Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And each year, supporters come together in June for various celebrations. And LGBTQ+ Pride Month is a time to recognize and celebrate the impact of LGBTQ+ individuals locally, nationally, and internationally. And the City of Folsom, being a welcoming city that is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all residents and preventing discrimination and bullying, and the City of Folsom being committed to inclusivity and welcoming, being welcomed to all regardless of their sexual orientation. The City of Folsom is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of racial, ethnic, cultural, and sexual identities of its residents. And we continue to raise awareness of the existence of discrimination and have improved laws and attitudes of society by encouraging inclusiveness. And the City of Folsom supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. So now, therefore, I, Michael D. Kozlowski, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, do hereby proclaim June twenty-twenty as, or twenty-twenty-one as LGBTQ+ Pride Month and encourage everyone to treat others with mutual respect and understanding. Thus proclaimed this eighth day of June, twenty-twenty-one. All right.
That's too bad. We didn't have an organization to give it or someone to represent because this is pretty...
Well, you know, it's possible that we're a little late to the game, honestly, of proclaiming this because it should go without saying, right?
Well, that and the celebration started several days ago.
And that, too. We missed the, we didn't have a, we didn't have a meeting at the beginning of the month.
Yeah, May would have been a good time to do this for June.
Perhaps, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. We'll look forward to next year, then. The next item.
Your next item is Scheduled Presentation, item number two. This is the City Manager's Fiscal Year 2021 Third Quarter Financial Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I'm presenting the Third Quarter Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2021. This is for the period July first through March thirty-first. The first slide here has our fiscal year 2021 budgeted figures on the left column. And then we have our projected figures for 2021 here on the right. And what we're showing is a projected revenue total of about eighty-nine point three million, so just under our budgeted number of eighty-nine point five. And a projected expenditures of eighty-nine million, just under our expenditure budget of eighty-nine point five. So when we take revenues less expenditures, we have a difference of about one hundred and one thousand projected for the end of the year. Then we're able to add that CARES Act reimbursement that we received the funding for in this fiscal year that was a reimbursement for our costs last year. So our total change in fund balance is projected to be about one point one million. And it would bring our unassigned fund balance up to about fourteen point seven million, or sixteen point five percent. And I just wanted to make a comment about the sixteen point five percent. The reason that it's higher than what we had been expecting is because it's being compared to the eighty-nine million dollar expenditure level, where in prior years, we were up more around ninety-five million, and that would make it more to about a fifteen percent level. So right back up to that about fifteen percent of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. Your next slide here shows the city's unassigned fund balance hitting that high point in fiscal year nineteen. It was at twenty point zero-five percent of expenditures. And then, of course, we went down to thirteen point eight million, or fourteen point four percent of expenditures. And we expect to be able to come back up a little, but it'll still be far below that high point that we had in fiscal year nineteen. Before we move on to the details of the revenue and expenditures, I just thought it was important for us to remember the tools that we had to put in place this year to get through the economic challenges that we faced. So although we are projecting to be able to add a little bit to our unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, we got here by implementing all of these tools pretty much for the entire year. We've kept the vacant positions frozen all year. Our temporary employee budget that was reduced by fifty percent has been at that fifty percent level. Parks and Recreation has ran their operations with a cut of over a million dollars. The capital budgets for the police and fire vehicles were temporarily reduced. So there were things that weren't purchased this year. Whoops. And the contribution to the Retiree Health Trust Fund was reduced. Typically, we were able to contribute about five hundred thousand dollars. This year, it was two hundred and forty thousand. And we also had to use some of our special funds, such as the Risk Management Fund, the Compensated Leaves Fund, the Housing Fund, and the Tree Mitigation Fund. So it was, it was all of these things that were in place during the year, about a six million dollar savings that allowed us to really hold the line and then be able to add just a little bit to fund balance. But none of the other funds, such as the Risk Management or the Compensated Leaves Funds, have been replenished at all. So now we'll take a look at the city's major revenue sources. At this point, we're projecting property tax on that top line to be right at budget, twenty-nine point nine million, about a million dollars over where we were last year. So no surprises with that one. Sales tax, we're projecting to come in at about twenty-three point five million, a little above our budget. And so that's good news. It's a lot of the home improvement stores and things that we're doing really well. And also, our online sales through the county pool did help us to get through this period. So we're projecting to come in about seven hundred thousand dollars over budget. Unfortunately, the transient occupancy tax is not recovering as well at this point, projecting it to be under budget by about two hundred and fifty-five thousand, still well under the nineteen-twenty levels of one point seven, which was under the eighteen-nineteen levels as well. So it's just not recovering as quickly. Charges for services is expected to come in at about twelve point five million at the end of the year. And this one has a few components to it. We have increased engineering fees from community development related to the plan area. A lot of those fees get passed through for increased contract costs. We also have in this our reimbursements from the state for our fire strike teams, but that comes with increased overtime costs as well. Offsetting those, we have our decreased revenue for our Parks and Recreation Department, and also some decreased revenue for ambulance fees from what we had expected. And I'll go into those in a little more detail on the next slide. So although we're over a little bit on this line item, the million dollars really is offset by some increased expenditures that we'll see further on in the presentation. Our licenses, permits, and VLF, this one, we are doing very well. This is where the permit activity happening in the plan area is represented. You've seen the presentations on how that activity has really increased in the last quarter. So this is having a positive impact on the general fund. Going down, we have our transfers in projected to be at about six point six million, right in line with where we were last year at six point five million. And then for our all other revenue coming in, pretty much at budget. So our total revenue subtotal is about eighty-nine million. And we can add that million dollars in the CARES Act funding for a total of ninety point three million, or just over a hundred percent of budget. This is just looking at the revenue in a little different manner. We have our tax-related revenue at the top, at fifty-six point three million, just under our budget of fifty-six point four. Our all non-tax revenue coming in at about thirty-three or about thirty-four million, about a million dollars over. And then here are some of those details again. So specifically, the development fees that were included in the charges for services is expected to be about a million dollars over budget. And as I mentioned, a lot of that gets passed through for increased contract costs. Building permits expected to be over at about two point eight million. Parks and Recreation fee, this is where we're still seeing a lot of the COVID problems here for us. So we have it expected to come in at about one point eight million. Our budget was about two point seven million. And of course, that's about fifty-two percent of where we were last year. And then ambulance fees is also experiencing some of the issues of different behavior from COVID, coming in at about four million dollars, down from our budget of about four point six. So again, you're seeing that same ninety million right here for our total revenue. As we move on to our expenditure categories, we have the same columns here. Our actual figures in the left, budgeted in the middle, and our projected here on the right. And comparing fiscal year nineteen-twenty's total, ninety-five point four million, to our eighty-nine million here in 2021, you can see this is where we had that six million dollars that we had to cut out because we knew that our revenues were going to be significantly reduced. So all of the departments have really been doing their part to keep expenditures down. And right now, we're projecting general fund expenditures to finish the year just below budget at ninety-nine point six percent, or savings of about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. When we look at the expenditures sorted by department, we see that most of the departments are under budget, some of them well under budget. I'll just go over the few that are over. We have Management, and budget is up due to technology purchases related to transitioning employees to working from home and launching our virtual meetings, and also due to some increased software maintenance costs. We have our Fire Department up by about one point nine million. And again, that's related to overtime costs, partially to the strike teams and also for some COVID exposures that created some additional overtime costs in the department. Then Community Development is up by about one point two million over budget, and that's due to the increased contract costs in the plan area that were offset by those increased revenues. But overall, we're expecting to come in at about eighty-nine point two million, or savings of about three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars under budget. So that was the summary for the general fund, and we'll move on to the Internal Service Fund. This is our Risk Management Fund, and it's used to account for the cost of the city's insurance programs. As we've mentioned before, we had a planned use of this fund. So we took our revenues down from sixteen million down to about fourteen million. And what that means is we transferred less in from the general fund and from the enterprise funds so that we could keep insurance costs in the general fund and in the enterprise funds stable and not have to increase them for increases in the cost of providing the insurances and workers' comp and those benefits. And then our operating expenses went up from last year. We were at about seventeen point five million, and we're up to about eighteen point eight million. So together with that reduction, that planned reduction in the revenues and a little increase in expenses, we're anticipating the unrestricted net position to go down to about six million dollars. And we were up at nine million dollars last year. Some of the categories that are in this fund, we have our Active Employee Health. It went up slightly over the prior year from about seven point three million to seven point four. Retiree Health was fairly flat. We haven't had a big increase in retirees. We haven't had a big increase in retirees. Workers' compensation and liability insurance is where we've seen some of the bigger increases, about three hundred thousand dollar increase for workers' comp and about a six hundred thousand dollar increase for liability insurance. I'll take a look at our three enterprise funds. For the water fund, we're projecting to end the fiscal year with program revenues above budget at about seventeen point six million. And this is due to the full year of increased rates. For our expenditures, we're expecting it to come in at about thirteen million, and that's below budget, mostly due to the operating expenses, which include our contracts line item. There's projects that are budgeted in here, but at the end of the year not expected to be used, so that's down to about four point nine. Then when we add our capital expenses of three million dollars, it brings the working capital in this fund to about twenty million, and it leaves them in good shape to prepare for some upcoming capital projects in the future years. Our wastewater enterprise fund is also projected to have program revenues exceed budget and come in at about eight point five million. Operating expenses are also projected to be below budget. Again, that's primarily due to the operating expense line item where contracts are located and just not expected to use the full budget amount this year. We have capital expenses projected to come in at about five hundred and thirty thousand, leaving working capital in this fund at seventeen million. And we have our solid waste enterprise fund. Program revenues are projected to end the year at fifteen million, a little higher than we had anticipated. I think on the last slide in a prior presentation, we had it at budget. So it's coming in better than we had anticipated, and it's helping with the situation in this fund for this year. Operating expenses are expected to be slightly under budget, but then when we add our two point six million dollars in capital expenses, the fund is projected to finish the year with an operating deficit again of about a half a million dollars this year, and will bring the working capital level down to just below five million dollars, well below that minimum reserve level that we'd like to have in this fund. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions from the council? YK?
No, no questions, I know. We have been going through the budget for the last couple of rounds, so it's great to see. But I made one request our sessions to city manager in my agenda review meeting I want to share with my colleagues, besides the financial numbers here. And for every budget, we do have some metrics accomplishments we need to meet, like how we are doing in terms of every department. So I was requesting, is there a possibility on a quarterly basis, how well each department is accomplishing those metrics towards the services? If there is a possibility to bring them along, it may not be the numbers, but as a service, accomplishments from each department. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. Rosario, anything?
No comments or questions.
Okay. Carrie?
I'm good.
All right. Nothing? I have just one quick question, and I think I know the answer to this, but the sort of the smaller operating expenses that we had for both the water and the wastewater fund, is that projects slipping, or is that just us forestalling some projects because of other reasons? Because it helped with our bottom line of capital fund balance, but are we falling behind on something, or is that just the nature of when things started and stopped over the last year?
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski. Members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. It's a combination of both. One is timing of projects, so a lot of it in terms of contracts or just the timing of when we would begin any pre-designer design services. Some of the operational, like physical operational line items that we have typically budgeted every year might be a replacement of pumps or electrical needs that we would need at certain spots. And not every year do we use that budget line item, but we have it in there because we know we've experienced that in the past. And then on the capital side, that is strictly due to the timing of construction. And so what I would foresee is likely in this summer, so next fiscal year, that capital line item growing in terms of expenditures because we're designing, say, and planning in this fiscal year. And then next fiscal year, because of the construction window, is when we'll see the large line item, two, two and a half, three million dollar line item tickets for the construction of the various capital projects on both the water and wastewater side.
So just natural oscillation of when things start and stop?
That is correct, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you very much. I think we can move on to the consent calendar.
Your next item is the consent calendar, and just as a reminder, item thirteen has been amended.
Terrific.
I'd like to pull item five, please.
Okay. Any others that council members would like to remove from the consent calendar for discussion?
With amended eleven and the exception of five.
Okay, fantastic. Is there a second?
I think it's amended thirteen, isn't it?
Amendment thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, it's amended thirteen.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, fantastic. We have a motion and a second for all items except for number five with the amendment as stated for thirteen.
Okay, council members Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. And item number five?
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move that we continue item number five to a future meeting in order to give us and staff time to consider some issues brought up by other organizations and members of the public.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this one to a future meeting. Is there any discussion from other council members?
I don't see the need to table it for a future meeting. Can you give any more details?
There's been some members of the public that have come forward. Did you receive an email today or yesterday?
No, it may be that I missed the email or something, but no, I didn't.
Okay, well, there's other interest in the building, and I just think we owe it to them to postpone this in order to have some additional conversations.
Yeah, some late, some comments came in late.
Why are they not at the meeting to present their comments tonight?
The totality of the comments didn't necessarily affect anything about our decision-making, but require some conversation, I think. So it was just, it's a courtesy to some other nonprofit groups in the city that would like to understand how we arrived at the contract terms that are in this.
Were they given the opportunity to know the prior meetings and the prior discussions? Or?
Well, contract discussions are not ones that get handled in public. So the negotiation of the contract itself was handled in closed session, and then between with our direction by the city manager with the Chamber of Commerce in this instance. So this is actually the first opportunity for it to be discussed in public. And some of the concerns that were raised are ones that we'd like to take some time to consider, or the city manager and we should consider. And just thought it was prudent to at least put this off to our next meeting.
So when are these discussions going to take place, privately?
So we're going to have conversation with the, at the very least, the organization that has expressed concerns and wrote the letter in the next, you know, couple of weeks or so, and then any outcome needs to come back and be shared through the city council and for discussion and decision.
Okay, but I, you know, I know that there was a few, a few other nonprofits in town that expressed concern or interest that if the chamber were to exit the building, they wanted the building. Because I know I got a phone call from one of the community organizations that had expressed interest a while ago, and I think there was a general assumption on everybody's part that once the, once Fed Corp purchased the granite school, the chamber was going to be out of the depot. Well, that's not what happened, and that was never guaranteed that that was going to happen. And that was basically how I explained it to the individual that called me. So I'm sorry that you're disappointed, but that was never a predetermined outcome.
Understood.
So if we're going to have discussions over the next couple of weeks, then we're now pushing this decision by at least a month.
So the lease?
Into July, where we don't normally have a meeting. So now we're out six weeks.
We don't normally have a meeting in August, but, you know.
But depending upon what day the Fourth of July falls on.
It depends, you're right. But the current lease agreement doesn't expire until December of twenty-two, Mr. Wong. Yeah, so we actually have a year and a half. We're so way out early on this one that we think we have time to be sure that everybody has their questions answered, and we're just, you know, as the mayor said, offering a courtesy to be sure that everyone feels heard.
So I just have one question. Does that mean that then it is now open for anybody at this point that may have an interest in the building to come forward?
This is going to come back on our agenda as a public item, not on the consent, most likely. So there'll be a public hearing about it in that way. So it'll be, it'll be agendized again.
Is there some reason why we can't just agendize it for the next meeting?
There may not be. There may not be. I'm not suggesting that we put this off far in the future, just we need to have a little bit of public outreach and then re-agendize this so more people have the opportunity to know about it and come here and speak on it. I think that's the, that's the bottom line.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion to table this and a second. You can call the roll, and anybody is entitled to, you know, vote no against that, that motion if they, if they choose.
Councilmember Rodriguez, no. Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Howell?
No.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Is that right? Yes, table it.
So the motion is approved on a three to two vote?
Yes, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to our next item, please.
All right, your next item this evening is your first public hearing of the night. This is item fourteen, resolution number one zero six four three, a resolution adopting the 2020 urban water management plan and water shortage contingency plan, and authorizing the city manager to submit the plan to the California Department of Water Resources and to the California State Library.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski. Members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. I did want to bring one thing to your attention before I started, is what Krista just read, I noticed that there was an S missing from the word "plan," but it is correct in the resolution, and it is correct in the staff report, just on the agenda, so it would read "plans," submit plans to, because there are two tonight. So, sorry, Krista, I missed that in the agenda review. So tonight is our public hearing for the 2020 urban water management plan and the associated water shortage contingency plan. We do have our consultant on the line in case there are any questions that we have that I may not be able to address, so they are here with us through the phone. Just a little bit of background, the previous document was completed in 2015, adopted in 2016. It is required by the California Water Code, section one zero six two zero. If the city does not complete and adopt the plan, the city is not eligible for the department or any Department of Water Resources grants, so it is a benefit to complete this plan so that we do have an opportunity for grant funding from the state. We must conduct a public hearing, which we're doing tonight. We're required to issue a notice in a local paper two times on two consecutive weeks, which our city clerk's office did on the twentieth and twenty-seventh in the Folsom Telegraph. We did make the public drafts available for both of these documents on Friday, May seventh. One thing that we do have to include is how the city is tracking under Senate Bill X-7-7, which is twenty percent overall reduction in water use on a per capita basis by 2020, so essentially from 2010 through 2020. Both of these must be adopted by city council. And what's new this year is that we must include and adopt a water shortage contingency plan. And I did discuss this at our last meeting, and I do have some slides at the end to just kind of recap what we discussed. These are the contents of what you will find in the city's urban water management plan. The four highlighted in red are really what I'm going to discuss. The others are just, you know, very basic information on the city, the water system, where our supplies come from, and then, you know, the adoption and submittal. So I'll highlight the four that are in red in more detail. This is just to give you an idea of historical water use, so you could see what the city used from 2015 to 2020. And I will note that in 2015, we were under state requirements for water reduction use, so that number you will see is lower than what we typically see in the 2016 to 2020 timeframe. But you can see, we're probably right around the nineteen thousand acre foot mark in terms of overall water use for the city. Projected water use, this is an item that must be included in the urban water management plan, and you can see the numbers based on the customer classification from 2025 moving out to 2045, which may align with an approximate close date to build out. There might be some, you know, infill after that time period, but overall, you could see what the total impact will be in terms of water use throughout the city from twenty thousand five hundred roughly in 2025, and then at build-out time about twenty-five thousand five hundred and nineteen acre feet per year. Senate Bill X-7-7, this is that twenty percent water use reduction by 2020, also known as the Water Conservation Act of 2009. There are various baselines that you can use as an agency. There's a five-year baseline and a ten-year baseline. Back in 2010, when we first had to choose the baseline, we decided to go with the ten-year baseline at that point, which was 1996 to 2005. You calculate this in gallons used per capita per day, or GPCD. And in 2015, we were allowed to revise our numbers based on actual population data from the 2010 census. We did not have that information available to us when we wrote the plan in 2010, so we were able to revise our population numbers. So you can see what that does to your values. You know, four hundred and twenty-nine was the original value of a baseline and revised to four hundred and forty. So what had happened is we actually over-projected our population before we got the census data in our plan and got correct numbers, which is why we'd see a higher per capita water use. And you can see in 2015, there's an interim target date and then a 2020 target, and you can see these were revised numbers. So in 2020, our per capita water use needs to be three hundred and fifty-two GPCD. You can see that we are well below that at two hundred and fifty-six gallons per person per day. So, you know, our customers over that time period have done very well in terms of becoming more efficient, more water-conscious. And I think 2014, 2015, 2016 also had an impact just on our own behaviors, you know, just as water users. And I know we did a lot of work just within the city at parks, L and L, you know, throughout the city, where, you know, they had twenty-plus percent reduction measure or savings just in a four-year period during that time as well.
So the population number on this slide, are we not counting left-handed people or something?
So the population number only is for the water service area, so American River Canyon North is part of San Juan, American River Canyon South is part of San Juan, and group quarters or prison is not determined in the overall city population, sorry.
Our most populated gated community.
Thank you for the clarification, Mayor, but yes, this is to those customers that actually receive water from city water supplies or retail water from the city. Just to give, you know, those that don't know, a little bit of background on the water rights or entitlements and contracts, this is how our water supply is developed, where the diversion point is for the city, so that's where we can physically pool water from. And then the type of water rights listed in the left-hand column, and then a place of use. So this is actually where you have authorized in your contract, or the city has authorized in its contract, to use the water within, within the city. So you could see, in total, it's about thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty acre feet per year. The one number that is not city, a city-owned contract, is the San Juan Water District Agreement. So that's an agreement between the city and San Juan Water District, where they wholesale water to the city, and we retail that water in that Ashland Service Area north of the American River, but it's not American River Canyon, north or south. That is a separate retail service area for San Juan Water District. One of the items that is necessary as well is this drought risk assessment. And again, these are the types of years. You look at a normal year, a multi-dry year, or a single dry year, sorry, and then now a five consecutive dry year window. Previously, that was three years in the 2010 and the 2015 plans. This is something new this year, is five years. And I did cover this in our last meeting, but it just goes, this table just shows the various reduction requirements we would anticipate under these consecutive year types. So the first two contracts are the pre-1914 contracts. They have no water shortage provisions written in those contracts at all. So we don't project that we would be required to reduce the amount in those contracts at all. So we don't project that we would be required to reduce the amount we can divert under those contracts. Now, the state, at some point, the state water board could step in and do what they did in 2014, 2015, and mandate requirements. But we don't project some future action under those requirements. The, the CVP contract does have an actual municipal and industrial shortage policy associated with it. So we have a fairly good idea based on previous years, just how those could be reduced in multiple dry years. And then the Ashland contract is very similar, or is similar, where there are CVP supplies potentially associated with that contract as well from San Juan Water District. And we did see, you know, several years ago, I think it was a 36% reduction that San Juan was under at, at one point in time. So we are able to project those in future years. And then the GET A and B water, that's groundwater extraction and treatment and the Aerojet property. We don't anticipate any shortages because they're required to pump and treat that water. And I don't even know how long that contract's supposed to go, but for quite a while into the future.
I'm just curious, Marcus, about the Ashland contract. What, what was the contract that San Juan signed with the federal government?
So they have a CVP contract. They have a couple of pre-1914 water rights contracts with the Bureau of Reclamation. But they have, and I don't know all the specifics and, and their details, but at certain times of the year, some of those contracts are limited in diversion rate. And so they have to switch sometimes between the two contracts.
So is this something that happened in the late 70s when we turned off the valve and forgot to tell them that we stole their water supply?
I would have to-
Was that one of the penalties that we paid for doing that?
I would have to ask San Juan Water District where or what timelines those different contracts originated. I, I don't know the question or the answer to that question.
Okay.
That I can find out.
That'd be fun trivia.
Okay. So with those percentages, now we can look at actual drought water supplies. And what does that mean then in the amount of water that's available? And you can see from the left, in a normal year, at the 38,350 approximately. And you can see in year five, we're at 32,720 acre feet. But if you just look at the potable supply, because the GET A B water is raw water, it's not really a, a potable supply. We would probably have to go through a significant amount of regulatory work to get that to be direct potable reuse. But it's about 29,470 acre feet if you take out that raw water supply. And I'll show you exactly what that means then in terms of supply versus demand in, in the next slide. So now if we look at that with the supplies and the demands, you can see that in those five-year types, the city does have supplies to meet its demands from 2025 to 2045, which is the range in which we need to show in an urban water management plan. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan, this was something that we did discuss at our last meeting. But again, this is just the plan that identifies any potential shortages in supplies versus your demands, and then how the city may respond to those types of situations. We do need to develop various procedures on how we determine annual supplies versus demands, which we've done. It's included in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan in terms of the process that we would go through at the staff level to determine what those supplies and demands for. And then if there are any potential actions that we need to take, obviously we'd talk to the city manager. And then if we needed to bring any action to city council, that would occur as well. And then identifying any response actions that the city may take. So, you know, we can look at our plan and identify if there was a 20% shortage difference, what are a menu of options that we have as a city or that our customers have in order to achieve a 20% reduction. So that could be days of the week watering. It could be, you know, timing of watering. It could be odd even days, things of that nature, which we could ask of our customers or direct of our customers if it's required under the municipal code. And then we have to identify the legal authority in which we can ask for these actions, which we have in the current municipal code. So the requirements of the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, you know, 1 through 12 here. I've discussed the reliability analysis, the demand assessment procedures, the six standard shortage stages. So what we have to do currently, we have five stages in the municipal code. What we will need to do is transition to six stages, which is 10, 20, 30, 40, 50%, and then anything greater than 50% in demand reduction. As I mentioned at the last meeting, this is something we will bring back to city council, because we want to get this plan adopted first and then get the municipal code to align with what we hope is an adoption this evening. The implementation, again, conducting a, a public hearing is required, which we are doing this evening. We made the public draft of this plan available on, on May 20, May 7th as well. And then we are allowed to update this plan. There's not a specific requirement on how many years you have to go in order to update it again. But if your supply or demand situations change, the city council would have the opportunity to update this plan, very similar to what we're doing tonight with the public hearing, a draft made available, et cetera. And then probably a presentation to, to city council at some future date. And as I mentioned, once we adopt the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, we will want to make sure that our municipal code conservation section does match with what is, is approved. And that work will commence once we get approval of the two plans. So in summary, we believe the urban water management plan and the water shortage contingency plan, for that matter, meet the requirements of DWR. The city is meeting its interim and target gallons per capita per day, and we're doing that very well. I mean, almost 100 gallons per person per day less than what the requirement is. We do need to adopt the plan by July 1st, 2021. And just some items, we did present the Water Shortage Contingency Plan on the 25th. A week before that, we did present both of these items to the Utility Commission. Tonight's the public hearing, and then the next update of the plan is 2025 with a target adoption sometime in 2026, which will probably occur in the June timeframe, similar to what the last three were that I've been able to work on. Just a note on some comments that we received. These are a couple of sections of the urban water management plan, and they aren't significant in terms of changes to the content. It's just really clarifying that section, which is 4.3.1.3, under climate change. And you can see what the proposed changes are here. Another comment, again, was under the climate change section and just updating the numbers. This is, these are comments that were received from Plaster County Water Agency, who is the lead agency in an American River Basin study that the city is also working on with Plaster County Water Agency, City of Roseville, and others within the region. And so they had a review of the climate change plan. And these are some of the comments that came back. So we just wanted to make sure we incorporated those changes into the urban water management plan. But these changes and comments came after the draft was made, made available for the public. And then one last item in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, we just wanted to be clear that there was a possibility that customers may or could be exempt from some of these items if certain smart controllers with certain types of controls in those smart controllers were available. So as an example, if we're asking for Monday, Wednesday, Friday watering, you, you can program Monday, Wednesday, Friday. If you're asking for a certain percentage reduction, there are smart controllers that will say, okay, do 10% less than what you're calculating. So if there are customers that do that, we would have the opportunity to decide, and this will come back in the presentation on the municipal code, but that may be an opportunity for us or for customers to be exempt from, say, three days a week watering if they watered four days a week, but they're still meeting a 20% reduction. So we didn't want to say they would, because that hasn't been approved yet. So we did just change the words to may and could. And that was a, a comment received from-
Ah, the magic of multiplication.
So with that, I will take any questions and turn it back over to open the public hearing.
Okay. Fantastic. YK, any questions on this?
Mine is, I know, Marcus, you explained slide number eight. Slide number eight. Oh, is that right? Oh, maybe nine. I'm sorry. See, even, I miswrote it. Yeah. We have that much of the water rights availability for Folsom. And out of that, how much water is coming from the groundwater, the rights?
This, we do not have any groundwater rights. The only water contract up here that has, that's associated with groundwater is this GET A B. So that's groundwater extraction and treatment. That's physically on the Aerojet property, but they are within the city's water service area. So we have an agreement from 2007 where Aerojet, at the, Aerojet, now Aerojet Rocketdyne, would provide a certain amount of treated groundwater for use within the Aerojet industrial property.
Right. That's not for the public use in city, that GET A and B raw supply.
It is not yet available.
Yeah.
But that is something, we have the opportunity under the agreement to be able to use it outside of Aerojet, but we would have to get permission from Aerojet in order to, Aerojet Rocketdyne, sorry, in order to do so. So, but we would not use that for treated water or potable water purposes. We believe it's more suitable to put in non-potable pipe, which is going in within the plan area, as well as the Aero or Easton and Easton, Easton Place and Easton at Glenboro Development in and around the Aerojet industrial facility. So there will be non-potable pipe, and we're working on a basically non-potable master plan now to see if we might be able to use that in the pipe that's being installed for, let's say, landscape irrigation in medians, possibly parks, you know, so these large landscape areas, frontages, et cetera.
Got it. Thank you. Because we are in drought already, you know, most of the water rights are from the surface water, lakes and, you know, dams, those kind of areas. Since those levels are severely so low, we are definitely going to face some challenges on the water.
YK, that's not true for the rest of the region. It's true for Folsom, because we really don't have, we effectively have no groundwater. City of Folsom is sitting on granite. We're not sitting on any water.
Yeah.
Many, many parts of the Sacramento area have significant groundwater reserves.
Yeah. I'm only speaking for Folsom here, you know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Carrie.
And if I may, I'll just add, there are a, a couple of plans that we're working on with the region where one is what's called the Sacramento Groundwater Bank, and that's an opportunity to take water and then physically put it in the ground and extract it later. So basically, you're saving it in an underground reservoir. And the other are in tides with agencies that do have access to groundwater and surface water. So we could basically receive groundwater from an agency that has access to groundwater and surface water. And they would be able to move, potentially move that water within the city's water service area. So we do have one project that we're finalizing with Golden State Water Company, where groundwater would be able to be moved into the city. But there's some operational challenges that we need to work through, which is not serving that groundwater to Kikum and Agakon. And then there's a further project, maybe a 10-year timeframe, where we could connect to Fair Oaks Water District in Hazel Avenue and bring groundwater in potentially to the, the south side of Folsom Boulevard in and around possibly that Aerojet development.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that additional information.
Okay. Rosario, any questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Marcus. I don't have questions.
Carrie, anything else?
Great job as always, Marcus.
Thank you.
Sarah? Okay. Yeah. Thank you very much. You and the staff did a great job on this.
Thank you.
I, I can't resist asking the question, though. What is the penalty for not doing this?
You know, I don't think there's any, um-
It's my favorite question ever.
You know, I don't think there's any statutory penalty, like fines or anything like that. I think the, the big thing is just not being eligible for any DWR grants. And that could be 500,000, you know, 700,000, 300,000, kind of whatever the city might apply for. So that, that could be, if you want to look at it, a penalty, just not being able to go after grant money from the state.
Happy to hear it's a carrot, not a stick.
The people at DWR have really big logbooks. We don't want to be in the bad book with them.
Very good. All right. Terrific. Do we have any public comment on this item?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Okay.
We do have callers on the line. So before we move forward, I just wanted to see if anybody on the line wanted to speak on this item under the public hearing. Hearing none.
Okay.
I'll move the item.
Call second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So your next public hearing this evening is number 15. This is resolution number 10639, a resolution of the city council of the city of Folsom approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an aggregate principal not to exceed $20 million to finance a 110-unit affordable rental housing facility for low-income and very low-income seniors for the benefit of an entity to be created by USA Properties Fund, Inc., or an affiliate, and certain other matters relating thereto.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Stephanie Henry, Community Development Department. I do not have a slideshow with this presentation. So the, we are here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR. TFR requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of a jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that that governing body approve the proposed financing. In this case, the project is the 100% affordable Sage Apartments located within Folsom that was approved by the Planning Commission in November of 2020. The developer slash borrower, USA Properties, Inc., has asked that the California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $20 million. This is to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a 110-unit affordable rental project for low-income and very low-income seniors located at 89 Scholar Way within the city of Folsom. CMFA is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt bonds. It's important to note that the debt to be issued by the CMFA will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financial documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation to the city. And the city will also bear no costs in the issuance of the proposed debt. So with that, it's recommended that the city council adopt resolution 10639, approving the issuance of bonds by the CMFA for the benefit of the borrower. Such adoption is solely for purposes of satisfying the requirements of TFR, the code, and the California Code, Section 6500. And that concludes my presentation. But I do believe that Anthony Stubbs with CMFA is on the line if you have any questions.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. Counselors, any questions? YK?
Thank you. You explained so well, Stephanie. Thank you so much.
Rosario, anything?
No questions.
Carrie?
I, I only have a comment, and I made this about another item, I think, a couple of weeks ago. Whenever we have something coming to us, when it, Pam, I'm talking to you. Whenever we have something that's coming to us, if it relates to a building or a parcel or a project site, can we just have even a, you know, very simplified map included? I think it would be helpful for us and certainly for the public. That doesn't really have anything to do with this item specifically, but the fact that we're doing, we're, you know, having the city kind of oversee the bond writing on this, I think it would be helpful for the public to know where the project's located.
We, we can do that. Councilmember Howell, thank you.
There you go. Sarah, anything?
I just want pictures. Kidding.
Anything? Okay. Fantastic. Yeah. Thank you very much. Public comment?
You have no request to speak on this item, but again-
but again, I would give the chance to any callers on the line who would like to address the City Council under the public hearing. Again, hearing none.
Okay, fantastic. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move a resolution. I'll move resolution number 10639.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalum Cherla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay. A big event. Item number 16.
Item number 16 this evening is the Folsom Ranch Medical Center Development Agreement Amendment. This is located at the northeast corner of East Bidwell Street and Alder Creek Parkway, project number identified, ordinance number 1314 for introduction and first reading.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, City Council Members. Steve Banks, Community Development Department. The project before you this evening is a request for approval of a Development Agreement Amendment between the City of Folsom and Dignity Health as it relates to the Folsom Ranch Medical Center project that was recently approved by the Planning Commission. As I know, the Planning Commission reviewed the Folsom Ranch Medical Center project at their May 19th meeting, and I'll give you some more details specific to the project in a moment. There were three entitlements that were reviewed by the Planning Commission at their May 19th meeting. The first entitlement that was reviewed was a planned development permit. The second entitlement that was viewed was a use permit relative to operation of a heliport facility. And lastly, a Development Agreement Amendment was also reviewed by the Planning Commission. The Folsom Ranch Medical Center includes 530,000 square feet. Most prominently is a 400,000-square-foot, six-story hospital building that will accommodate three, approximately 300 hospital beds. There are also two, three-story medical office buildings on either side of the hospital building. And as I referenced, there's also a heliport facility proposed with this project as well. The project will be developed over approximately 23 years, and there are five different phases. One of the medical office buildings will be the first phase, and that's approximately the year 2023. The first phase of the hospital project will be in approximately 2028. But again, this project will be developed in five phases, approximately 23 years. The project is located prominently on the east side of East Bidwell Street, just north of Alder Creek Parkway, as shown on the city map. This is an exhibit showing the site plan that was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission at their May meeting. You can see the hospital building centrally located on the project site. The first phase, as I referenced earlier, is a medical office building north of the hospital building. We also have a medical office building located south of the hospital building. The heliport is located on the west side of the project site. This is a rendering of the medical center. You'll notice the hospital building centrally located on the campus with the two medical office buildings on the north and south sides of the project site respectively. The heliport facility is on the west side and can't be seen from this rendering. This is a perspective or a rendering of the entrance to the hospital building. I would note that the final architectural details will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission at a future date, and these are artistic and architectural renderings at this point. But this gives you a sense of what you might expect when the, when the project is developed. As I know, the Planning Commission reviewed this project at their May 19th meeting. There were four topics discussed at length at this meeting. Primarily site access was discussed at length. Specifically, the commission discussed the future location of a signal at the intersection of Alder Creek Parkway and McCarthy Way. The commission also discussed signage. There's a robust sign program that was submitted with this project. The commission had concerns about one particular sign, and that was a freeway-oriented sign, and they recommended that sign be removed. The commission also talked about preparation for a future Class 1 trail, and that's part of your development agreement this evening. Some of the language was revised as part of the Planning Commission meeting to reflect the city's desire and the applicant's intent to construct that trail sooner rather than later. And that's part of your development agreement this evening as well. Lastly, the commission discussed bicycle parking, and they wanted to see more bicycle parking to serve the hospital and the medical office buildings. So they increased the number of bicycle parking spaces, including both indoor bicycle parking spaces as well as bicycle racks on the outside of the, of the project. There was one person who spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. There are also a couple of comment letters provided to, to the city. The gist of these letters and the public comment was they want to ensure the timely completion of the bicycle trail. The city and the applicant are both in agreement to this. And again, a condition of approval was modified to reflect both the city's desire and the applicant's intent to make sure this trail gets done sooner rather than later. The commission took action at the May 19th meeting. They approved an addendum. They approved a planned development permit, and they approved a conditional use permit. And they're recommending to the City Council this evening approval of the Development Agreement Amendment. And in terms of the Development Agreement Amendment, there's some key factors. As I referenced earlier, this product will be developed over 23-year timeframe, five different phases. So the Development Agreement accounts for this long timeframe for construction of the project. The Development Agreement provides flexibility in terms of the entitlements. Again, because of the long construction timeframe, the entitlement timeframe has been extended. The Development Agreement also memorializes agreements with respect to site access to allow for the future evaluation of a traffic signal at McCarthy Way and Alder Creek Parkway. The agreement acknowledges water infrastructure and connection changes associated with this project. The project is switching water zones from Zone 3 to Zone 4, which requires an increase in the Zone 4 water tank size capacity, and also additional piping to serve the project. So the agreement memorializes that. I would note the applicant is responsible for all additional costs associated with these changes to the water service system. The Development Agreement also acknowledges the future Class 1 trail and the applicant's responsibility to prepare the area for the future Class 1 trail, and that when the city gets the funding for construction of that trail, that we'll be ready to go. And lastly, the Development Agreement acknowledges that future modifications may be required with this project as they are required to go through OSHPOD. And so there are some outside agencies would, could, could impact the timing of this project as well as some of the construction of this project. This is a unique project. There are many benefits to this project in terms of, that the city looked at in evaluating this Development Agreement Amendment. Specifically, this product is expected to generate over 2,000 new jobs by the time this project is complete. There's a significant capital investment being provided with this project, the tune of $1 billion over the course of 23 to 25 years. And obviously, perhaps most importantly, the, the healthcare impact and additional healthcare services provided not only to Folsom but to the surrounding communities in the Sacramento region. So staff recognizes these benefits. The Planning Commission also recognized significant benefits with this project. And as a result, staff is forwarding the recommendation from the Planning Commission for approval of the Development Agreement Amendment. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. The Dignity team is also behind me this evening, and they also would like to share a few words with you and have a short presentation.
Any specific questions on this, this presentation thus far? YK, anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Well, I have just one, and it really is, it was on the bicycles. So there was an increase of spots for bicycles? Is that correct?
Yes. The Planning, the Planning Commission wanted to see additional bicycle parking spaces provided. I believe 50-some-odd bicycle parking spaces were proposed, and the commission recommended that around 100 bicycle parking spaces be provided. The applicant was proposing to utilize the bicycle parking requirements from the Folsom Municipal Code, and there's a lower threshold for that requirement. The Folsom Plan area-specific plan has a higher threshold, and that's where the 100 number came from. And they want to see the bicycle parking spaces provided not only outside on bicycle racks, but also they'd like to see bicycle lockers and indoor opportunities. And so those 99 spaces would be distributed among indoor and outdoor parking spaces.
That's definitely a lot of bicycles. I, I think in more dense areas, you know, bicycles are very commonly used. So, okay. Okay. My only, my only comment on the whole bicycle thing? I think it's really interesting, but it's right up there with requiring additional bike parking spaces at hair salons. Women don't go to the hair salon on a bicycle. And I'm imagining, although there may be a lot of employees that will utilize the interior bike parking, I'm not seeing a lot of visitors to the hospital or certainly patients at the hospital arriving by bicycle. So I think that's something that we need, we need to kind of keep that in mind when we're talking about these in the future.
I think it's a fair comment.
Especially if one were to look at the, the typical number of available parking spaces at the existing hospital, it's very difficult unless you're a staff member to find parking over there.
Anything else right now?
That's good.
All right. Sarah? Okay, great. Let's, let's call the applicant up. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council Members. I'm Chris Chaplin. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for Dignity Health here in the Sacramento Division. With me tonight are Bob Campbell, a consultant on our major capital projects, Robert O'Hare, who is our area manager for construction and design, and Martha Lofgren, who is our outside legal counsel. To begin, I'm going to try to play an animation of the project. There we go. And thank you to the Divinity Group for, for that architecture. I'd like to s-
We can watch it again.
It's excellent.
It is.
I'd like to take a couple more minutes and say a few more thank yous. Thank you, Mayor Kozlowski. Vice Mayor Aquino for engaging with us on this project. You've attended our, our Zoom calls regularly, so we do appreciate the engagement on that. Elaine, thank you for your engagement. I think I remember sitting in your office three years ago talking about this, so, so thank you. The Planning Department, you've done a fantastic job. Steve Banks, fantastic work. I think you're all accustomed to how good that is. And of course, the Planning Commission for recommending this to come to you. So I appreciate all the engagement. Dignity Health is really proud of its 40-year engagement with the city. We've been here for 40 years. And we knew that there would become a time when our current infrastructure was going to be insufficient to support the healthcare needs of Folsom, given the way it's growing and thriving. And we're at that point. So a couple of years ago, we began the process of planning this new entity. I will say that this is an expansion of our current footprint. And I say that purposely because we intend to keep the existing campus going for quite some time. But this is an expansion, so think two campuses working together to provide a full spectrum of services to the community. Dignity Health is a not-for-profit organization. I think that's important to know because the revenue that we generate from healthcare is invested back into the health system. It's invested back into the community. In 2019, Mercy Hospital of Folsom provided $42.3 million to the community in unreimbursed care. I fully expect that that will continue with the new campus, probably in the tune of $40 million a year in unreimbursed care. So we're here for the community first. We're here to deliver the healthcare needs of the community. In addition to that, and Steve pointed this out in his part of the presentation, this is going to be close to a billion-dollar investment for us over the course of 23 years. We have $990 million there on the slide. I think Steve's estimation of a billion dollars is a little bit closer with inflation and over the 23-year period. We'll be providing construction jobs to the community throughout the course of that. We will be buying locally, of course, so we'll be supporting local businesses. There'll be 2,000 healthcare professionals employed in the new campus. And for every dollar that we spend, there's approximately a $2.30 return on it. So I wanted to take the time and say thank you. Absolutely enjoy the partnership we have with you and your consideration of that. I'd like to invite Martha to the podium to make a few additional comments. But again, before I leave, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. Martha Lofgren, Legal Counsel for Dignity Health on this project. Chris already thanked the staff, but I want to underscore that because this application was filed the very end of August, and here we are, early June. All of this was done during COVID. All of this was done during lockdown. The bulk of it was done by video Zoom meetings. And, and you have a very significant, really, legacy project in front of you. Elaine led her team, but there has just been a significant effort by all members of the staff. Every department had engaged on this project, and we appreciate it. We appreciate that it was kept on track and it was kept on time. There were a few moments where our side said, can we keep up with the city staff? And we said, well, we'd better because they're leading the way here, and we want to get this project approved. So thank you for all of that hard work. It's been, been very hard work. We also wanted to really underscore and acknowledge what happened at the Planning Commission. The City Council doesn't have to do the heavy lift here because the Planning Commission did it for you. It was a four-hour meeting, and Steve Banks gave a one-hour staff presentation. I don't remember very many staff presentations that go into that much detail. But again, this is a significant project, and he spent the time to explain it. The Planning Commission took the time to look into every aspect of it, down to the parking spaces for bicycles, talked about the details of the trail, and talked about the signs in great detail. And respectfully to Steve, they didn't just recommend that the pylon sign be eliminated. They required that. So there is no pylon sign, and we want to make that very clear. There's no 80-foot sign on the freeway. And Dignity Health agreed to that. There was no objection and no argument. We resolved all of the issues in advance of the Planning Commission meeting related to the Class 1 bike trail. We're in complete agreement on all of that. There is no appeal of any conditions. We're here in partnership with the city's staff and the approval of the Planning Commission tonight. And what is before you tonight is really quite limited. We're willing to answer any questions you may have on the project because we acknowledge this is a televised meeting, and people in the community may have some questions. We also are happy to work with the city on providing information to make it publicly available should people ask for that later, because we know, we know that it's an important project. The contract in front of you provides assurance and certainty to Dignity Health. The Development Agreement is a mechanism for the city to say to Dignity Health, we have approved your entitlements, and we're going to stick with that approval. We're not going to change that halfway through your billion-dollar investment. The city retains certain rights related to public health, safety, and welfare. Steve Wong did a good job of documenting all of those, and we worked closely. Dignity Health has reviewed all the terms of the Development Agreement Amendment, and they agree to those terms as well. Many times when a, an applicant is in front of you asking for a development agreement, they have to try to establish that they have a good track record, that they deserve the assurances that you're willing to provide. that they deserve the assurances that you're willing to provide. Well, in this case, the track record is 40 years. And I can speak personally to a 25-year track record of the direct involvement of Dignity Health in making Folsom a better place, a healthier place, not only for people who have health insurance and can get their way to the hospital for services, but the many underserved people in our community. And I mentioned at the Planning Commission that one of the very first things I worked on when I was city attorney was the rehabilitation of the Ducow Way Apartments. And Councilmember Howell will probably remember that. The city manager came to me and said, Mercy Hospital wants to help us rehabilitate some apartments where there's very high crime. And you know, I'm a lawyer in my 30s, and I was like, I don't get this. Why do hospitals help rehabilitate apartments? Well, Dignity Health, Mercy Hospital, they do that because that's part of their mission. And they have continued to do that for all the years that they have been part of our community. They have provided extra healthcare services at Theodore Judah Elementary School. They have grown with the city when the city has grown, and they have kept pace with the medical needs of our city. So it's particularly notable that they are the first hospital ready to expand south of 50. And again, this Development Agreement provides them with the certainty and the assurances to make that investment. One of the things that I've learned in representing Dignity Health is that hospital systems have choices on where they make their investment. And they look to where it's easy to expand, where the needs exist, but where the community will embrace that hospital and help them grow. And throughout this entire process, Elaine has made sure that your city staff welcomes the growth of this hospital in this community. And we appreciate that. We have seen one public comment letter that was submitted this evening. Three points that I saw raised in that letter. The first one was about the large sign, "It's Gone." It was part of the Plan Development Guidelines, and we identified where it was coming out of the guidelines. So the file copy that the city will have will not have any reference to the pylon sign. The second point that the community member raised had to do with the Class 1 Bike Trail. The language was revised at the Planning Commission meeting. We actually, I drafted it in advance. We provided it to the staff, and it's been incorporated into the Development Agreement Amendment that you have in front of you. The final point that was raised had to do with the traffic analysis, if the signal is installed in the future. And the community member wanted to make sure that pedestrian and bicycle safety and usage would be considered, and that's always part of a traffic analysis. So we agree with him. We don't think there's any change that is necessary as a result of that. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the Development Agreement Amendment. We do have our team here if you have questions about the project. With that, I'll close.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mrs. Lofgren? Or about anything before we do public comment?
We'll wait for it probably.
Okay. Rosario, anything?
There's questions, right?
Questions, yes.
No questions right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
No questions.
All right, Sarah?
I have a question about the traffic signal, and I see Mark Rackavan in the back, so it's probably best directed to him.
Is it, how is all the bicycle traffic going to pass through it?
Thank you for being here, Mark. So I'm looking at the electronic version, in case my colleagues want to follow along. It's page 23 of 294, and it's Section 2.2.9, "Intersection Controls at Alder Creek Parkway and McCarthy Way." And specifically, what stuck out to me was, it says, "If the city determines that the left turn access to the medical center at the intersection of Alder Creek Parkway and McCarthy Way must be discontinued for any reason, the city shall advise a landowner of the city's intention to discontinue access, provide landowner with a reasonable opportunity to comment on the city's determination to continue access, including an appeal to the City Council, and consider the impact on safe and efficient public access to the hospital and emergency services," yada, yada, yada. I guess my question is, that language just strikes me as a little strange. So are you expecting or recommending that the left turn onto McCarthy Way be eliminated at some point?
We're not recommending that. What we are concerned about with projects of this side, and particularly with arterial streets, are uncontrolled left turn movements. So we have put similar conditions on projects in the past where what we're really looking for here is if there becomes a documented safety problem, such as a history of traffic collisions that are attributed to uncontrolled left turn movements across, you know, an arterial street. And if it were determined that, you know, the cause of those collisions was the uncontrolled movement, we prefer to reserve the right to bring that to, you know, the decision-maker's attention and to the applicant or the, you know, the property owner's attention, say, hey, we have a safety problem here, and we need to address it. So that's why that language was inserted into this particular case because there's an existing uncontrolled left turn onto McCarthy Way, which will either be replaced by a traffic signal, as has been discussed. It could remain if it continues to operate safely. Or it could become a safety problem that has to be addressed through some other means. And so that's the purpose of that language.
Okay, and so if you eliminated the left turn onto McCarthy, then someone going to the hospital in their car would have to go up to Westwood, turn left, go around the apartments, and then come in? Is that how it would happen?
Yeah, if they were on Alder Creek Parkway at that point. You know, keep in mind, there is a driveway on East Bidwell Street as well that people from the south can access very readily. People from the north would have to perform a U-turn. But if they were already on Alder Creek Parkway seeking access to the hospital, they would have to go to Westwood and circulate back.
Okay. I understand that there's been some discussion between Dignity and the city staff about, you know, whether a stoplight is appropriate there. And, you know, I personally like roundabouts. But to me, it's really important that that left turn be available onto McCarthy. And I think probably everybody in this room has driven to the hospital at some point. And even if you're not going to the emergency room, but you're going to visit someone in the hospital. It is typically a stressful thing, and you're already distracted worrying about your loved one. And I just think, you're going down Alder Creek. You can see the hospital's right here, but you can't get to it. You have to go around here. I mean, think about people who are right now leaving McCooney or Starbucks or In-N-Out, and they want to go to the freeway. They got to follow all these signs. But compound that with you're trying to go see, you know, your dying father in the hospital, which, you know, I personally experienced. And I just think, I'm just not comfortable with that. So I would, I'm glad it's there. There would have to, it's available to be appealed to the City Council. I don't know that any of us will be sitting here in 2034 or whenever that happens. But yeah, I'd really like to see that left turn onto McCarthy stay.
Excellent. Okay, yeah, it is difficult to get to the Starbucks in Green Valley and Blue Ravine for that exact reason. Okay, thank you very much. I don't have any other questions. Do we have public comment?
Yes, you do. In the chambers this evening, you have one request to speak from Phil Scott.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, welcome, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, standing here before you tonight on behalf of the Greater Folsom Partnership, and also as a resident of the city of Folsom for 30 years. And I'm both proud and happy. I'm proud that we, in these walls of this building right here, have had the foresight to be able to attract quality corporate sponsors or corporate entities that also provide a level of care that all of us have enjoyed and sometimes haven't enjoyed. Our two daughters born there, more emergency room trips than I really wanted. And then my pops took his last breath there as well. So, and then just very honored that they have enough confidence, dignity, to sink another billion dollars into our community. So with that, on behalf of the partnership, thank you very much, Dignity Team, and the staff and electeds as well. Thanks a lot.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you do have two comment letters for me to read into the record. But before I do that, I wanted to see if there was any callers on the line who wanted to speak on this item. Okay, hearing none. Your first comment letter this evening is from Antonio Acevedo, and he writes, "Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Antonio Acevedo, commenting on this item. As the council takes this project into consideration, please keep in mind that local construction projects matter. Reinvesting in our community matters. My questions are, one, will there be a commitment to utilize local hire? Two, will the contractor be required to provide workers' healthcare? Three, will the contractor be required to pay area standard wages on all their projects? And four, will the project reinvest in education of the next generation by requiring the use of state-certified apprentices? Projects with no commitment or contractor requirements just add to the downward pressure on our community and its workers." Thank you. Okay, your second comment letter this evening is from Bob Delp, who writes, "Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, my apologies for the last-minute submittal, but please consider these important issues prior to a decision regarding Agenda Item 16 of your agenda for tonight's meeting, Amendment Number 2 to the first amended and restated Tier 1 DA between the City of Folsom and Dignity Health relative to the Folsom Ranch Medical Center project. Please deny distant-reed skyline signage. Packet Page 114 states, two, signage, "The commission expressed concern regarding a proposed 80-foot-tall freestanding pylon sign, 750 square feet of sign area, intended to be located in the northwest corner of the project site adjacent to US Highway 50. Specifically, the commission did not believe that it was appropriate for a hospital medical use to have a freeway-oriented pylon sign as this type of sign is typically utilized by retail and commercial uses, parentheses, Folsom Auto Mall, Palladio at Broadstone, et cetera," closed parentheses. "For branding purposes. As a result, the commission recommended that the freestanding pylon sign not be permitted and that it be removed from the Folsom Ranch Medical Center Plan Development Guidelines. I agree with the Planning Commission that such a sign is not appropriate. Such signs are intentionally distracting to drivers. They are designed with the very purpose to attract driver attention, which distracts their attention from the road. Such existing signs within the city should be phased out, and no new such sign should be permitted in the city. Certainly, the applicant's request to allow a 750-square-foot distant-reed skyline sign where the Folsom municipal code would otherwise limit the sign to 300 square feet should be denied. The staff report does not discuss whether the applicant submitted an application for a variance, and no evidence is provided that such a sign meets the requirements required for the city to issue such a variance. The staffers' report discusses this Planning Commission recommendation, but appears to then simply disregard the recommendation. Staff's apparent analysis of a distant-reed freeway sign, packet Page 195, is that city staff also recognizes that medical centers provide vital and essential services to communities and that providing adequate signage and wayfinding is a critical operational element. This conclusion is unsupported in terms of the proposed freeway sign size, and staff provides no evidence or analysis of the distraction risk and visual effects caused by such signage. For visual impact and public safety reasons, I am opposed to such a sign and urge the council to deny this request in this element of the application. The only lighted signage that should be permitted for this development is small-scale signage as necessary only for local navigation. The staff report and project description are unclear as to what other signage may ultimately be installed, and the City Council should provide more definitive guidance on what will and will not be allowed." Mr. Delp knew I might not get through this in three minutes. So I'll just highlight, his two concluding comments are, "Please consider bicycle and pedestrian modes of travel in traffic operations impact analyses." And his second paragraph had the title, "Please clarify and impose early Class 1 Bike Trail requirements." Thank you for your consideration, Bob Delp.
All right, fantastic. Any other public comment from anybody in the room? All right, let's bring it back to the council. YK, any questions, comments, thoughts about this?
It's more of the thoughts and comments. I know I'm only five months here, and I see that this started almost three years ago, three-plus years ago. I know Phil is here from Greater Partnership. This might have started a long time ago, how to expand our businesses. I want to sincerely thank you for you, Mr. Chris Chapp, choosing Folsom. You may have an option to go to El Dorado Hills or Rancho. Everyone is building so much. Yes, while we are going through, we may hit some challenges, like the traffic and all those. Well, we are smart people. We can resolve it when the day comes. So I want to thank you and Elaine, our team. Sincere thanks. I think that's all I have.
Very good, Rosario, any?
My comments are that I think Folsom is very fortunate to have this project come before us. Prior to opening up a restaurant five years ago, I spent 24 years in healthcare management on the revenue cycle side. And I had a fantastic career. I know the jobs that are coming and the medical services that are being provided to the city of Folsom and the surrounding area. So this is a very exciting project for the city. So thank you for doing business in Folsom.
Fantastic. Carrie?
As a long-term resident of the city of Folsom who remembered the old Mercy Hospital, and when the hospital moved and attended the fundraiser to build the heliport so the helicopters didn't have to land on Creekside, I'm happy to hear that the heliport's been included in the project because it was really, really warm for that MASH fundraiser in the parking lot that night. And to Martha's comment about, just among not even the greatest, probably by a long shot, contribution on the part of Dignity has been their financial commitment, what took place at the apartments on Ducow. And it's great that Dignity made the financial commitment, but trust me, all of the credit for what happened with that apartment complex is owed to the wonderful Sisters of Mercy and...
Niva?
Niva Simorelli, who is the leader of the band on that one. So, and there are all of those sisters and Niva are watching down on us right now, and they're very, very happy about this project moving forward. So I'm looking forward to approving it.
Very good. All right, thank you. Sarah? All right, I famously avoid hyperbole, but I will say that this is definitely one of the most important and exciting projects that we've had come before us while I've been on the council. And I would suspect it's top 10 all time for Folsom.
Yeah.
It really is a, it's a magical development that has happened. And the staff of the city, the, you know, rapid, hard work that has happened, I'm grateful to you for it. To everybody at Dignity and Martha, great work putting this together in such fantastic detail in a relatively short amount of time. And I'm sure you're probably going to get good news here in a moment, but I wish you well. And the Sisters of Mercy educated my wife in high school. So just keep doing great things for my family. Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell, did you mean ordinance 1314 introduced for first reading?
I don't have my glasses on. Yes. Sorry, I was looking at 18. Yes, ordinance 1314.
Okay, do you accept the friendly amendment there? All right, great. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes, and thank you to everybody once again. All right, next item.
So as you'll recall, Item 17 was taken up earlier this evening, which takes us to new business, Item Number 18. This is Resolution Number 10648, a resolution of support for the Sacramento Abandoned Vehicle Service Authority to pursue extension of the vehicle registration fee for abatement of abandoned vehicles.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Pam Johns, Community Development Director. I have the pleasure of presenting this item to you this evening. It's consideration of a request to extend the existing abandoned vehicle program that Folsom participates in with many other partners in the region. The vehicle code established the provision to allow for collection of a portion of the registration fee to be used for abatement removal and disposal of abandoned vehicles on public and private land, with conditions and specific- on public and private land with conditions and specific programs. So, in 1992, Sacramento established one such program and now has seven agency members. The administrator is the Sacramento Abandoned Vehicle Service Authority, which is also the STA Board. The seven agency members are listed here, City and County of Sacramento, Galt, Folsom, Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and Elk Grove. The City of Folsom joined in 1998, and essentially the county receives the fees, and for a small 2% administration fee, they then distribute to member agencies based on population and relative number of abatements that occur within the jurisdiction in any given year. That is done through quarterly reporting and then distribution. It's been automatically extended for 10-year increments over the last 30-year period, but it is set to sunset in April of next year. Because of Prop 26, this now constitutes a fee that qualifies as a tax, and so any extension of the program requires 2/3 support of Sacramento County voters to continue the program. So, a quick cost-benefit slide that I put up, and some of this information was in your staff report, but just by way of showing you, this is one of our highest code enforcement issues in the City of Folsom and has been for a very, very long time. It's shocking to see the number of abandoned vehicles that get abated on both public and private property in our community every year, in the 700s over the last five-year period, as you can see from this slide. We submit a fee to, you know, a record of our, the number of abandoned vehicles that we abate every year through our code enforcement team, and that is based on the estimated staff cost. Councilmember Rodriguez asked a good question about this, but it's the relative cost of due process to abate the vehicles, and that cost gets submitted to the staff at SAVSA, and then they turn around and give us back that equivalent fee. So, it is a full-cost recovery program. We get, on average, about $90,000 a year over the last five-year period. The problem, or challenge, is outlined in the report, is that because we now need a ballot measure to extend the program, that cost of the ballot measure is not covered through the program fees, and is something that cost would need to be borne by the seven-member agencies, and really only full participation would make sense for the City of Folsom. With full participation, our fair share portion would be about $42,000. So, certainly, it would pay for itself if the measure passed. So, all we're asking for the city council to do tonight is to say that, kind of a conditional support, because the STA Board needs to consider what steps to move forward, and only if all seven-member agencies participate would we move forward. Certainly, another consideration is the likelihood of success. That's something that could, you know, we could do preliminary polling, and there was also discussion about whether the program could, we could pursue some kind of a statutory exemption. So, the STA Board is going to consider this either at the end of June or early July. With me this evening, I have STA, or SAVSA Board, Staff Representative Jennifer Dole, she's on the phone, and then also Pete Picardo, our Code Enforcement Supervisor, in case you have questions. But we're recommending that the city council identify your support conditionally with all member agencies participating, and then any specific financial commitment would have to come back to the city council for action at a subsequent meeting. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, ultimately, your recommendation is that we indicate that we would be willing to participate on a fair-share basis with all seven entities that are part of this?
Yes.
As long as they pay their fair share, but not committing to do so just yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Your intent to do it, essentially.
Right, 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 right. Any questions?
I have a suggestion, given that Jennifer's on the phone, and Mike, you're our rep on STA, and this is based on my many, many years of experience on the STA Board, and having been down the Measure A, Measure B, whichever one you want to call it, whichever time it was, many different times. My concern is that it's likely that there will be a Measure A on the ballot next year. Given the problems that that always creates with some of the jurisdictions, it's a power struggle of sorts, but it's a very expensive campaign to run. So, the money to run those campaigns and to do the research comes from labor, comes from a number of different places, from a lot of the people that build the transportation projects that STA funds. I agree that this is vitally important, but I don't see how, given what I think Measure A could look like, I'm having a really hard time imagining that this passes on its own, because most people have no idea what it is. You know, John Q. Public's like, "Well, I'm not going to pay to have, you know, somebody else's car abated." So, I don't know where this goes. It's not a big enough amount of money that I don't think they're going to get any outside funding to do polling. You know, you don't, polling starts at 20 grand. I don't see anybody investing $20,000 in this. There's no reason unless it's the tow truck companies. So, my suggestion is that STA, together with the people that are helping out on looking at what can and cannot be done. Is it going to have to be a 2/3? Is it going to have to be a 50/50? And see if there's a way to pull this into the larger Measure A. If we can't do it, I'm happy to support it, but I don't think it's going to pass.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think it has a prayer.
It would be, it would be difficult, for sure, and the, you know, the, we're kind of in an awkward spot, no matter what we do, because, you know, let's say we did run a, somehow, a really fantastic $1.5 million campaign was run, and we passed it. Great. That will be difficult with the noise of all kinds of other things on the ballot. We could try and incorporate it into STA, and that, in spite of our best, you know, the best efforts, could also fail, and then we're left with a gap in funding, and we will have paid for a campaign, paid some portion of a campaign, even if it's a smaller portion, for a larger, larger measure, and then be left with the necessity to come out of our regular budget for the abatement that's necessary here in Folsom each year. So, there's no, yeah, you're right on the money. There's just not a good solution here, I don't think. So, I think, you know, for whatever it's worth, I think because this is not the firm commitment, and we haven't written a check, it's probably no harm in seeing what the interest of the rest of the communities is.
Right, and I think you're the perfect person to lead that conversation, Mike.
Well, I'm going to get that opportunity next Thursday.
Good. Perfect timing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any questions, thoughts, comments?
No, I just want to thank Carrie, the way she analyzed. I was paying so close attention because she's our STA guru, right?
Former, no, it's Mike.
Oh, it's no. So...
Far more experiences with this.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank her, you know, and I was looking at it, yeah, there is a $40,000 investment I get every year for $90,000. It's a good deal, right? But if the $40,000 is worth spending, are we going to win? You know, that, thank you. No, I don't have any specific questions. I think in our agenda reading, they clarified quite a bit. Thank you.
Rosario, any thoughts or questions?
No questions.
Okay, Sarah?
Well, I have one dumb question, I guess. Where, what happens to all those cars? Where do they go?
I don't know. So, I would ask our code enforcement expert to share that information.
We've been having Marcus put them in the lake to make it look more full. I'm kidding.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Pete Picardo. We don't end up crushing or towing all those vehicles, but as you know, one way to clean up a community is to get rid of junk cars and property maintenance issues, which kind of involve altogether. So, we do tow a lot of vehicles. One of our highest code enforcement cases is the vehicle abatement. So, whether we continue to operate and be a member of this, we'll continue our efforts in tagging cars and getting rid of them. So, it's still a high priority for us. But they're not all towed and got rid of, but we, whether it's private property or public property, we continue to get complaints on that, and we have to respond, so.
So, really quick, Pete, so these cars that get abated, are they, so if somebody's in my driveway, I call, they get towed? Is that the same as a car that's been abandoned and sitting somewhere, and?
Most of what we're referring to is probably abandoned vehicles on the public highway.
Okay.
We do tag a lot that way. We do tag vehicles on private property. We currently don't pursue the avenues of towing out of someone's driveway, although there are some particular cases we may have to. But we do consult with our attorney's office when we have to go that way. Usually, we make contact with the responsible party, and the issue's resolved.
Most of the time in Folsom, the car's worth enough money that someone's going to pay the tow bill to get the car back.
Okay.
And then do whatever they need to do. Throughout the county, in many parts of the county, that is not the case.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Great seeing you, Pete. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, do we have any public comment on this one?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, last call.
Do you know what I mean? Nobody knows what it is unless they got their car code.
Don't all stampede up to the front at once. Okay.
Anybody that got their tar code, their car towed's not admitting it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, this is, I would hesitate to say this is straightforward, but I think that our motion is...
I'll move the resolution conditionally.
There you go. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, we are going to suspend our regular meeting temporarily and convene the joint, joint meeting of the Folsom City Council, the Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Finance Authority, South of 50 Parking Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rodriguez?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
Chalamchera?
Here.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, we have consent calendar. Somebody like to pull anything for discussion or move it?
I'll move adoption of consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchera?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to adjourn the joint city council meeting and resume our regular city council meeting. City manager report.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to again thank the city staff team that helped push the Dignity Health Project over the finish line to the benefit of residents and patients for decades to come. Thank you, Steve Banks, thank you, Pam Johns, thank you, Steve Wong, thank you to many others for the heavy expert lift. Folsom Fire Station 38 was recently dedicated to late Folsom fire captain John Murray, who died in the line of duty on October 2, 1995. The station located at 1300 Blue Ravine Road is being remodeled and will reopen this summer. Captain Murray is survived by his wife Stephanie Murray and two daughters, Ryan and Samantha, who were all presented with engraved commemorative bricks by our fire chief from the original station 38. The Folsom Parks and Recreation Department is seeking public input for the first park in the Folsom plan area, South of 50. The park, currently known as Neighborhood Park 3, is located on Mangini Parkway, immediately adjacent to Mangini Ranch Elementary School, which is scheduled to open for the 2021-22 school year. Interested community members are invited to attend a virtual workshop from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. tomorrow to learn more about the park site and schedule. And then finally, the summer season at the Steve Nicholas Aquatic Center officially began Saturday, May 29, as recently renovated swimming pools and a new play structure opened to the public. Recreation swim will take place daily from 1:00 to 5:00 through September 6, and that's all I have.
Fantastic. Okay, city council comments. YK, anything tonight?
I'll make quick, yeah. I started working with, you know, from our last two-by-two meeting, I think I was asking about the elementary schools, middle school safety, and, you know, you put me in touch with Jennifer, and I started learning about it since August, September is coming out, you know, what can we do proactively, you know, either campus monitor observation? We do have some at the middle school and high school. How about the elementary schools? So, started researching it, you know, hopefully, I'll get some, you know, good information, and I'll bring it to our council and see what we can do through our two-by-two to school districts. That's one thing I'm working on. And the second thing is, maybe city staff is already seeing it. I'm promoting the See, Click, Fix campaigning. This summer is going to be my campaign, you know, wherever they can find some, you know, issues, you know, try to use it in a more appropriate way. Not everything can go, and see how we can resolve those, you know, major issues. And I'm using the school kids and their parents as the See, Click, Fix volunteers. I'd say, in a voluntary basis, volunteering. And the third one is about the water. We are in drought. I know, I was mentioning before, you know, we are going to be in drought, but Carrie corrected, "No, YK, we are in drought right now." So, I started investing some time, you know, how we can save, you know, another drop of water, and, you know, researching it, you know, Elaine probably, you may know, Marcus and his staff are helping me. I'm putting more as an IT guy hat there rather than a councilman hat, you know, how the data analytics and all those, where we can save some water. That's going on good. So far, it is not that much we can save it, but there is some tools I have, you know, researched and identified during that process, at least to see whether those tools can be installed as a smart homes on the Folsom South as a part of their home package. There are any way, you know, promoting the smart homes right now, you know, all the buildings are happening in South of 50. This tool may be another $150 extra for their to attach, and they can monitor. So, those are the things going on. Otherwise, the last one is, yep, I attended my quarterly Sacramento Metro Cable meeting. It's an usual budget thing, and, you know, they have some staff classification changes. Otherwise, I think we may be getting another $60,000 extra, $50,000 in our contributions. So, that's a good part on that one. With that, thank you, and good evening, Folsom.
Thank you. Rosario?
Yeah, I do. I just want to give a shout out to some Folsom residents that are putting Folsom on the map. Leila Bowden Jaworski is the owner of Design Shop Interiors. She was on last night's pilot for Wasted Space on HGTV, and I watched it. It was fantastic. There was also a young gentleman from Folsom, David, who's 23, who was on Master Chef, and Jose Gomez, who was on American Ninja Warrior Monday Night Show, and he has connections to the Citizen Bind and the Historic District, so we have some celebrities in Folsom.
I'd like to mention your new commercial. You didn't know you were on a commercial, and I think it's on channel, where did I see it? Channel 6?
No.
Yeah, you are.
Oh, I'll have to go look for it.
And it was weird because I almost missed you because you were actually wearing an off-white mask.
I'll have to go look for it. I also want to give you guys an update. A couple of, several weeks ago, I shared with you that we were going to get together with some individuals and basically start talking about the homeless situation here in Folsom. And so, we had our three-day workshop last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and it was very intense. It was actually pretty fantastic. We were able to capture some opportunities and basically today's problems and determine where do we want to go from here and be able to address some of these issues. We also left with a very long list of action items to proceed, and in this group, we, you know, it's one of those situations where we had the right people on the bus, and I was, it was really fortunate to work with individuals that are very passionate about the unhoused situation happening for Folsom. And one of the things that we talked about is that we don't want to enable people. We really truly want to get people the services that they need. And I just want to thank Sergeant Aaron Zelaya from the Folsom Police Department, our navigator Laura Bascas from Powerhouse, John Ingram from Heart of Folsom, Judy Alexander, from Jake's Journey, Jeannie Schuman, Marina Seha, our Sacramento Behavior Health at Works Folsom PD. She was there for the first day, and she brought such good information. And we also had Heather Riley from Has Hope and Pastor Sharon from Reflections Church and myself. And I also want to thank a former colleague of mine who was the facilitator, who didn't charge us anything for her services, and it was, it was great. So, I'm hoping that sometime in the month of July, that this group can present to this team what it is that we came up with so that you guys can see where things are headed, and I got to tell you, you will be so impressed with just some of the outcomes that are happening. I also just want to remind everybody, in three and a half weeks, we have the Folsom Pro Rodeo Hometown Parade on Saturday, the 26th, at 9:00 a.m., and I want to welcome to the Folsom Police Department two new officers, Officer Sergey Chern, Chernya Skavatsky. I think I got Chernya Va...
Sounds perfect.
Chernya Va. Anyways, I hope, I'm sorry that I chopped up his name, and also Lauren Riffel, and that's it.
That's great. Thank you very much. Carrie? Kerry?
Alswell at RT, and as you heard from some of the staff tonight, things are going well at Regional SAN. We are going through our transition from Prabakar to Kristoff Dobson. That's going well. The Southeast Connector Project is moving forward, as we all know, and hopefully they'll get more construction done than they expected to this construction season. And nothing really new from the South Placerville Transportation JP, which is basically the rail alignment, so all things are good. I'm with Rosario. It's time to cowboy up for the rodeo. Can't believe we had to miss one last year, but please take advantage. I don't know what restrictions there may be on ticket, so if you're interested in going, I would recommend that you call the Chamber sooner rather than Labor. There, the Chamber's phone number is, you can probably get everything online, but the number, the direct phone number is 916-985-2698. And please drive careful. I'm really, really tired of watching people run red lights, run stop signs, and I'm just amazed that I haven't seen an accident. So it's been crazy, so watch out because Folsom PD's out there. Other than that, good night.
Very good. Thank you. Sarah?
I just have three quick things. Air Quality Management District met a couple weeks ago. We adopted the budget for the coming fiscal year. The district does have a structural deficit. Luckily, we have a very healthy reserve, so we were able to pull from that. But it's just a case of more and more federal and state mandates regarding air quality, and those mandates don't come with funding. So we're going to have to be looking at things in the future, whether it's increasing the fees or what have you, so stay tuned for that. Just wanted to thank Chief Cassano for taking the lead on that dedication to Captain John Murray. I have to say, it was one of the most meaningful ceremonies that I have attended in, you know, my four years on the school board and my almost three years on the council. And Captain Murray's now-grown daughters, one lives in El Dorado Hills, one lives in Rancho Cordova, so they travel that Highway 50 corridor a lot. So I made a deal with them that if they waved to my dad's sign every time they go by, I'll wave to their dad's fire station every time I go by, so. And then finally, I would ask that we adjourn in memory of former Folsom resident Mark Jennings. He was a guest at the Heart Winter Shelter last year. Great man, a veteran, a larger-than-life personality. When he left the winter shelter last year, he was on his road to sobriety. He had a job. Unfortunately, he had some health issues last year. He had a heart attack. That was followed by a hit-and-run accident where he was walking along a street in Sacramento in the middle of the day. A car hit him, dragged him for about 100 yards. He had significant, significant injuries and had to spend many, many months in a rehab center. And unfortunately, Judy Alexander of Heart let us know that he passed away this week, so rest in peace, Mark. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. The, so I had the SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on Monday that I attended, and largely, we discussed as a, in workshop style to educate some of the new members of that panel about the dwindling availability of gas tax relative to the amount of miles traveled on our roadways. So we're continuing at SECOG to try and develop strategies for filling that gap. Nothing on the table right at the moment, but it's a complex problem that has to do with, mostly with federal gas taxes being more or less frozen for something more than 25 years. So anyway, news on that sometime this decade. Thursday, I have a whole bunch of things going on. There's a Greater Sacramento Economic Council meeting in the morning. That STA meeting that I thought was next week is actually this week on Thursday. And then we are taking a stab at starting a two-by-two of sorts with Rancho Cordova to discuss economic development issues. So we'll see what comes of that. It's just a kind of a test meeting to see if there's a reason to coordinate on anything in particular, so those are coming up. I also was really pleased with the dedication of the fire station. That was, that was a really nice event. Thank you. Welcome to the new two, the two new police officers also, and I will, I will close the meeting in memory of Mark Jennings. All right, we are adjourned at 9:05.